Welcome, everybody. This is the October 26, 2020, live session of the Sayona City Council, which is now in session. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance and the prayer led by Councilmember Milne. Pledge first?
Yes. Pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings of this day that we may all join together, contemplate how to help the citizens of this city in this time, and that we hope for your watching over all of our city employees and the citizens of this city to keep them safe. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Well, have a seat, everybody. We're back live, which is nice, strange, but nice. I hope everyone is doing fine. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you'll do the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bench. Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Milne.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostache.
Present.
Mayor Clock.
Here.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
Thank you. Iron Battle Clerk, any announcements?
Mayor, I'd just like everyone to be aware that the ballots for the number third election are available, and the city clerk's office is extending hours for election-related business on Wednesday, October 28th, until 7:00 p.m. and this Saturday, October 31st, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And also, we encourage you to return your ballot either in person at the city clerk's office or by using one of the city's ballot drop boxes, which are located at La Union Civica on Wadsworth Avenue, Wanna Gas Credit Union using the Robert Street access, Davenport Manor on Davenport Avenue, and at Fordney Park using the Grashett Avenue access. And for your convenience, you can verify your voter registration, verify your precinct location, and track your absentee ballot at michigan.gov. Click on the Government tab, and then click on Voter Information Center, or simply call 989-759-1480 and press Option 6. And Mayor, that takes us to public hearings.
Thank you. Before we start, I want to say welcome to those here today and also anybody listening on SGTV. But because this is now again a public meeting, a live public meeting, we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, talking, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, and this is something I needed to make sure I did, is remind everyone to please silence all electronic devices. In the small crowd we have here, it will be very noticeable, so please do so. Regarding the public hearing, the purpose of a public hearing is for the members of the public to address council as a whole and for council to receive information from the speakers for consideration regarding specific action being requested of us. Speakers must limit their remarks to the subject of the public hearing. Please begin by stating your name and your position on the subject of the public hearing. The first speaker will be considered the main presenter or designated representative, and you will be allowed 10 minutes to speak. Other speakers will be limited to three minutes. Public hearings are not a question-and-answer session, therefore, questions must not be directed to individual councilmembers, city staff, or the audience. Madam Clerk, do we have a speaker?
Well, I'll announce the public hearing subject, and then you'll call for public input, Mayor. So the public hearing tonight is regarding the official intent to reimburse project expenditures with bond proceeds and authorizing publication of notice of intent to issue the bonds.
Are there anyone here to speak or to comment on the subject of the public hearing? Is there anyone here?
Mayor, I'm going to cover the project so that we don't have...
Mr. Manager, yes, go ahead.
So I'm covering this so that we didn't have someone from fiscal services, the Water Department, or OMB to have to come to the meeting. So on tonight's council agenda is a request to adopt the resolution declaring official intent to reimburse project expenditures with bond proceeds and authorizing publication of the notice of intent to issue bonds for the water supply system improvement. This water revenue bond will be issued in the amount of not to exceed $22.5 million. With the approval of the publication to intent to issue bonds, the 45-day right to petition for referendum of these bonds will commence. A second approval will be required to actually reimburse project expenditures and to issue these water revenue bonds. This will occur in calendar year 2021. There are two components to this resolution. The first is reimbursement of project cost. And this resolution has our intent to reimburse project expenditures with bond proceeds. In late September, we received a correspondence from Huntington Bank advising the city that a refunding opportunity on our 2011A water revenue bond that would generate over $937,800 in debt service savings. This would be $864,600 on a net present value basis. The financial management team met with our municipal advisor, Robert J. Benzinski of Benzinski, and determined the feasibility of this refunding. We have been advised that this refunding opportunity would be advantageous to the city. And the second item of the resolution is the authorization to publish the notice of intent to issue bonds. With the reimbursement of the 2011A water revenue bonds, the financial management team thought that this would be the ideal time to consider the capital project needs of the water supply system improvement. Working with Paul Reinsch, the Director of Water and Wastewater Services, various projects have been identified for the Water Operations and Maintenance Fund and are listed in the resolution. It is a recommendation of the financial management team that the city proceed with the issuance of these bonds. This is an optimal time to issue bonds. Furthermore, in speaking with the city's municipal advisor, the financial management team has confirmed that the municipal bond market is very much stable, and many municipalities are in the capital market on a daily basis. The demand for essential utility revenue bonds is high. Mr. Benzinski further advises that due to the pandemic and the amount of people working and staying home, the municipal utility market is much stronger. Collectively, the municipal advisor and the financial management team believe there will be no issue in bringing these bonds to market and finding investors who will purchase them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to comment on the subject matter of the hearing? One final time, is there anyone else to comment? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some more.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one housekeeping item business here to take care of. Attorney Lusk?
Yes, just in order to comply with the new requirements of the Open Meetings Act, members who are attending remotely need to identify that they're attending remotely and state the city and state from which they are attending.
Thank you. We have three attending remotely. Councilmember Ostache, could you do so, please?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Ostache, I'm attending remotely from Saginaw, Michigan, from my home residence.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Yeah, Councilmember Scherzer, attending remotely from home here in Saginaw, Michigan.
Thank you. And Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Councilmember Williams, I am attending remotely from my home here in Saginaw, Michigan.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, thank you for that matter. And if we're now ready to proceed, Madam Clerk?
We are, thank you, Mayor. Our next order of business is public input.
We have... Well, welcome to... We'll give a welcome to those that signed up to address council tonight. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. Clean call to the podium. Let us know if you will be speaking slowly for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points first. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council so we can give serious considerations to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Thank you.
Our first speaker tonight is Andrew Harris.
Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris. Oh, in the hallway, maybe? Could you call for Mr. Harris? Nobody? Okay.
Okay. Then let's go on to Diane Clock.
Ms. Clock. I get to say welcome to my wife here, so good to see you. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Diane Clock, and I live at 2112 Grashett Avenue. I am a member of the Board of Trustees for the Public Libraries of Saginaw, but I am not speaking for the board, and I am here to give you an update on events taking place at the Public Libraries of Saginaw. First, the good news. The Public Libraries of Saginaw are open for business. Some things may look a little different as the staff of each library works to ensure the safety of the staff and patrons. All patrons are asked to wear a mask when they are in the library. September was Library Card signup month. The goal was to ensure all children have their own library card. Throughout the school year, librarians and library staff assist parents and caregivers with saving hundreds of dollars on educational resources and services for students. From free access to STEM programs and activities, educational databases, homework help, to the expertise of librarians, a library card is one of the most cost-effective school supplies available, especially since the Public Libraries of Saginaw will no longer assess daily overdue fines. Patrons are still responsible for returning items on or before the due date. If a patron has overdue books, they will not be able to check out new material. With your library card and the Public Libraries website, you can access Michigan Legal Help, a site helping Michigan residents solve their legal problems, such as wills, housing, traffic, money, and debt. You can also check out digital books using Overdrive or read the latest from independent authors in the Indie Author Project. Tired of spending money on a magazine and then not able to read the whole magazine or are interested in only one article? With your library card and RB Digital, you can read magazines without having to destroy trees to make the paper. Not ready to go to the movie theaters yet? Your library card gives you access to Hoopla and Canopy, which allow you to watch movies and TV shows for free. In-person events have been moved online to safeguard public health, and children of all ages can enjoy storytime with Ms. Maureen, crazy crafts with Ms. Beth, Mother Goose's Rock and Rhyme Puppet Show, and TLC... Sorry. Teaching, Learning &amp; Connecting, and the punny presentation of the week. The summer reading program for children and teens finished in August, and in spite of the pandemic, was a success. The staff has begun an adult reading challenge, which will replace the adult summer reading program. Now for an update on the renovation of Hoyt Library. The 1960s addition has been waterproofed. New windows along the south elevation by the handicap ramp have been installed, along with new flashing. The masonry work is being finished. Next spring, work on the landscaping and the parking lots will begin. Then the grand old lady of Saginaw will once again shine. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Alexander Verdoni.
All right. Next, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Alexander Verdoni, and I am speaking on behalf of a small group in regards of the Henry Nivel monument. Over the past few months, we have watched news coverage regarding the removal of statues and monuments across the country. Such actions led by community activists are not new, but today's political climate has perhaps accentuated these sorts of debates regarding history and memory. Historians have long advocated that the best solutions for these debates entail full community involvement. And while we see monuments being removed, we hear less often of examples of how memorials and monuments have been recontextualized in order to tell more inclusive stories. The National Park Service has long been at the forefront of this recontextualization, reinterpreting historic sites like those of Sand Creek Massacre and the Battle of Little Big Horn to incorporate Native perspectives while also preserving older monuments on the site. What does get less media coverage are the smaller things communities do to reinterpret these monuments. For some in our local community, the Nivel monument, with its emphasis on the first European man to allegedly reach Saginaw, perpetuates a language of colonialism. By emphasizing a Euro-American contribution to our region's history, the monument can and does signal to communities of color that certain stories are preserved over other stories that are often marginalized. Nevertheless, the Nivel monument also means a great deal for many in our region, particularly those in the Catholic community. And so, rather than viewing this memorial as a potential source of divisiveness, we believe it offers us an opportunity to add to the story of our community. Our first step in our group will be to erect a teaching table near the Nivel monument that will share some of the history of those to whom Father Nivel delivered his mass. To accomplish this, we have gathered as a group with the Ziviewing Center of Anishinaabe Culture, the Saginaw Historical Society, and professors from the Saginaw Valley State University, as well as folks from the Ezekiel Project. And over the next few months, we will create a draft model of this teaching table and secure funding. In the spring, we intend to return and present this information formally to city council for your consideration. We are taking our time with this because we would like this to be a permanent fixture to allow people to kind of learn about how history can be viewed from different perspectives. And of course, to keep in line with the Saginaw shippewas desire to not remove the monument entirely. We hope that this will become a wonderful addendum to the monument. Also, we'd like to thank you for your service, and we hope to work with you next term. Thank you.
Thank you. That will be referred to the city manager. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our order of business next is the remarks of council.
Okay. Today, we... It's going to be a little unusual because we're not in our usual order, but we'll follow the normal order. I want to remind the councilmembers of a three-minute limit. Today, we begin with Councilmember Scherzer. Councilmember Scherzer.
Thank you, Mr.
Go ahead.
Can you... Can everybody hear me? Okay. So thank you to both our public speakers, and it's so great to see councilmembers back in chambers, but also back at home, still at home, I'm sorry. I also want to thank councilmembers Bench, Forbes, Williams, and Milne for participating in the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Zeta Muca Zeta Chapter Town Hall Forum yesterday. We've been in this community for over 53 years. I'm the president of my local chapter. And we have hosted this forum for 30-plus years. And we continue to be a community activist organization that's dedicated to the community in many aspects. So thank you to the fellow councilmembers. I also want to share that on November 1st, we will be co-hosting the community forum with the NAACP. It's the final community forum right before election. So we will be sharing ideas and activities that will be going on on Election Day that's in the community with a bunch of organizations participating. But we'll also share some history of community activism. So please, it'll be live on Facebook and Zoom. So if you can attend, please tune in. There are some great things going on on November 3rd. I also understand Halloween is this weekend, and who would have thought we're already here to the end of October? But I want everyone to please be safe and make great judgments. There's a lot of community activities around Halloween going on. However, there's also been 3,800 cases of COVID-19 in the state of Michigan. So COVID is still here, and we need each other for many reasons. So please, the community and councilmembers, be safe. And then last but not least, we are almost a week... Well, we are a week away from Election Day. So please, it is your right, it is your vote. Please get out and vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'll leave one thing to report. Thursday at Bishop Campbell's Church on Sheridan Road, we'll be doing a trick-or-trunk in conjunction with the community. We have several community people coming out, and we've also got assistance coming from our chief and a couple of his fellows, and we'll also have some Saginaw County Sheriff's individuals there. And it is going to be a trick-or-trunk. We're asking that anyone that wants to be involved, please bag your candy. We will have some Reacher's that we... So graciously, got donated to us from the county sheriff's department. I wasn't at their fair on yesterday, but I heard it was a blast. They had the costumes, they had all of that. When I have the costumes, our costume is the way we look every day. So on Thursday night from 5 to 7 on Sheridan Road, the group is Great Giants Market and Community Coming Together. It is a bunch of community people. Instead of just sending kids out, we're going to do trick-or-trunk. So I think that it's going to be a good, good, good thing for us to do. I'd also like to thank all of our speakers for coming up. I'm sure that the city manager will get back with you. Ms. Clock, appreciate you as always. And I know, Alex, I know I'm going to mess it up. So I'm not even going to try that last name. So just thank you all for coming out speaking. Yes, this is strange because we're talking through masks. I'm taking it safe. Just want to wish everybody who plans to go out for Light Up the City and then I should watch, be safe. Just be safe. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Bench.
Thank you. I too would like to thank our public speakers. It was very nice to hear from our First Lady of Saginaw, and it was always very nice to hear from you. But Mr. Verdoni, we definitely appreciate your thoughtful efforts, and I'm excited to see what you guys are able to come up with, and hopefully, we'll be working together in the future, one way or the other. It's definitely kind of bittersweet to be back for our last meeting before the election, but I just wanted to say to my colleagues that it has been a wonderful four years with you all, and I'm glad to be here with you guys. And to our city staff, you are the best. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Forbes?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd just like to thank all the staff that worked on this whole setup and making all of this work. And I know that I can see the thoughtfulness and the way the room is arranged, and I appreciate their focus on our safety. I'd also like to thank you, I think, our speakers for coming out tonight. I have really enjoyed watching the evolution of the Hoyt Library, and I just... That's part of my childhood. It's one of my first memories, and I just... I think that place is so special, and I'm glad that it is... It is getting the treatment it deserves. And I'm excited to see it be done sometime next year. And Mr. Verdoni, I just think the way that you're going about this is really wonderful, and I'm excited to see what this incredible group of folks come up with to balance out, to give some context to the Henry Nivel monument. I just think it's wonderful, and I appreciate you taking your time because it's an important topic, and I think it is worthy of that meditation. I want to remind everyone that the last of the Business Plan Workshop series by the Saginaw Economic Development Corporation is on Wednesday from 11 to 1, virtually. It's free, but they do request that people sign up. So go ahead and call 759-1395 to sign up. I just think that's a wonderful resource. I hope that people are utilizing it. Just want to reiterate that voting is so important, so please, please make your voice be heard. I'm so thankful for Janet and her staff giving us some extended hours, making sure that that's not a barrier for anyone to access. And those four drop boxes are spread so well across the city, and I think that's really going to make things easier for people as well. And I'm thankful that this will be something that we have going forward, not just for this election. And also, I want to send good vibes to you and your staff and your volunteers for this big day. I know that there's so many more absentee ballots, and it's just going to be busy, and I hope that we have the best turnout we've ever had. I really hope that people make their voices be heard. So, all right, thank you, Mayor. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to thank the public speakers for coming out. This is a unique situation with this hybrid setup. I can't say that I don't like it, except for the audio. It's pretty difficult to hear, but I can make out mostly everything. I would like to extend a thanks to Councilmember Scherzer for her organization yesterday hosting the candidate forum for us to get our views out there before the election. I would also like to bring up, this weekend with it being Halloween, just to remind our citizens, as far as safety goes, when you're out and about trick-or-treating and whatnot, please be conscious of using your phones. You get caught up in texting and checking social media so much, and I would hate to hear any story of how a child was lost because someone wasn't paying attention because they weren't socially aware at the time. So I think it's very important for us to make sure that we are aware of our surroundings at all times. And lately, the biggest distraction for us all is our technology. And lastly, I would just like to remind everyone to make sure you get out and vote. Get out and vote next week. Obviously, this is by far the most important election, but not just because it's a presidential election, but for local government. Please get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ostache?
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our hybrid council meeting. Alexander Verdoni, thanks for the update. I'm looking forward to more of this as this all starts to roll out. I'll be looking forward to some of the updates that you are giving tonight. Thanks again for all your work on that. One of the opportunities I had over the last couple of weeks was to attend an event at the First Word Community Center. So a big shout-out to the folks over there for getting a partnership with HUD, which the First Word Community Center now is an envisioned center. And what that is, it's only like one of five in the state of Michigan. About 17 of these exist in the Midwest, and one of 69 in the United States. So with this partnership, it's going to allow them to work with HUD and offer some federal services that can include federal services for utility assistance through the FEMA programs and borrowing projects through the USDA, and also youth development programs through other federally funded organizations. So I know they worked on this really, really hard, and it was really nice to see this come into Saginaw. So congratulations to everybody over there again. And also, just kind of a side note, as I've been out in the city and looking around, one of my favorite places is about ready to open in Old Town again, too, which is kind of an icon here in the city, so that is the Junction. So hats off to that group for keeping that building restored and all the hard work that they put in there to really make it looking fantastic again. So a place that I'll be able to hang out and frequent soon once we get through COVID and people commute there and do different outings again. And also, hats off to everybody that worked on the city's website. I happened to have the opportunity to go out there and take a look at all the work that was done there, too. Much, much, much big improvement, and was easy to navigate and find the things that I was looking for. So again, it's got a really nice look, and if you haven't had a chance to check it out, please, folks, go check out the new city website. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Balls?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a lot to say this evening, but I would like to tell all the citizens and the city of Saginaw to please, please get out and vote. A lot of people lost their lives for the right to vote during history, and it's a shame that we... Any citizen that's not voting is really a shame on them and our ancestors. So I'd like everybody to get out and vote. You know, a lot of times when you sit in here asking people to go out and vote, everybody probably to hear my voice probably is voting. So the people that do vote, please go out and grab somebody who you know is not voting and take them to the polls. I know the city is ready for the voting. I know that historically, a lot of people have already turned in their ballots, so it may not be as busy as we think it may be at the polls this year. So I'm looking forward to this year. I think it's going to bring something good in 2021. To the citizens that came and spoke at the city council meeting today, we thank you for bringing information to us because a lot of things we don't know about, and you guys bring it to us, and we can help work on it after it comes to us. So we can't do this by ourselves. So we really thank you for coming and sharing the information with us. Other than that, I really don't have much to say. I just want to tell all the citizens to be safe during Halloween. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Milne?
Thank you, Mayor Clock. We may be restricted in...
We may be restricted in some ways, but there are still many things happening in our community. This past week, Delta College at their new downtown campus added a new sculpture. This sculpture was created by the Ken Newman Sculptures. It was inspired by an Abraham Lincoln quote. And I'll read the quote. "I will study and be ready, then maybe the chance will come." And it depicts a student approaching the door of opportunity. I think this is a great addition to our downtown. And I hope people get a chance to look at that. And especially once the students are back in that, it's gonna be a great addition. I just wanted to add my thanks to Zeta Phi Beta, the Zeta Omega Zeta Chapter for their candidate forum. And they've kept the tradition alive by having a virtual one. As the Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, arson watch is this Friday and Saturday. And it looks like Saturday's gonna be about the best weather of the week for Halloween. So, that's a good thing. And last thing I wanted to mention is it is scheduled, if it doesn't change like it did last week, tomorrow, there will be a dedication at MBS International Airport of our new taxiway Charlie. Was totally redone this year. And this project was originally scheduled and got moved up because it received full federal funding, where we would've had a local match out of our passenger facility charge. Due to the COVID nineteen, the federal government put some additional funds out for projects like this. So, it's got a limited number of people to be attending. But I'm the vice chair on the commission there, so I will be at the dedication tomorrow afternoon. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I have a few things. Thank you, Councilmember Ostas, for mentioning the First Ward Community Centers and Vision Center. I had the opportunity to attend. And that was really quite a wonderful event and a wonderful occasion for Saginaw. I also had an opportunity a few weeks back to, and I think this was mentioned previously, myself and several other council members attended an event at Horton Jones Center where it was renamed for Christina Jones, a longtime twenty-seven member, year, year member of the board. And is now the Christina Jones Resource Center. The reason I bring it up is because she did send a thank you to myself and all council members and city officials. And I'll pass that around. It'll be available in the city manager's office for anyone to review if they would like. The Urban Corps Mayors, that's thirteen of the Urban Corps here in the state, Saginaw included, are a part of the Michigan Municipal League and have an Urban Corps Mayors Michigan Investor Summit that is happening tomorrow and the next day. It will involve at least eighty-five registered developers and investors being registered to hear pitches, basically, why different communities, Saginaw included, should be invested in by these investors or developers. There are about half of them from Michigan. And the other half of those investors and developers are from nationwide. So, this is an opportunity. It will be presented through Saginaw Future. Cassie Miller and no relation, Thomas Miller, will be presenting on behalf of the city. And I'll be attending as well. It is an opportunity for Saginaw to present itself both statewide and nationwide to investors to show why we are an, we are a opportunity zone that is ready to be developed and ready and willing for investors to come to Saginaw. So, hopefully, that will see some positive results. It's certainly an opportunity that hasn't existed before. It's hosted, as I said, by the Michigan Municipal League and should be a rather exciting event. There was another thing that the Michigan Municipal League has been working with, and that's a city business collaborative. It is a collaboration of business leaders throughout the country, throughout the state, and of community leaders, many mayors, and also other community leaders. That one of the things recently it did was sent a letter to the main leaders of the legislature, the majority leader, the speaker, the minority leader of both houses. And it was signed by twenty-five of those major business and mayors and other governmental officials, myself included, urging action on behalf of communities. So, with that, I will move on. Madam Clerk.
Our next order of business is reports from Manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. And I would like to thank all the council members for working with us to bring back this meeting. I think it's important for us to try this virtual hybrid meeting, which I think is, at least on our end, is working very well. So, hopefully, we'll be able to talk to Councilmember Ostas, Scherzer, and Williams after this, or sometime this week to see if we can make any improvements. I think it's important, as Mayor Pro Tem mentioned in her email, for our first meeting after the next election. And then we'll see where we go from there. After the first of the year, we're required to have in-person meetings under the current law anyway, with just a few exceptions for a hybrid possibility. So, this is a good test run for us. Also, I would like to thank city employees. I mentioned we're back in our meeting for the first time, but all the city employees have been back working for several months. And a lot of our employees never left work. We were closed for a while. The building was closed, but many of our employees were still here working. Some departments, I don't believe, had anyone off, public safety and water and sewer and streets. So, appreciate all of the work that they did. And some of the departments did modify their shifts. So, the assistance from all of our unions was appreciated as well, particularly APSME and SEIU. An update that the city clerk provided me today. A number of council members talked about the absentee voting and the number of voters. So, Saginaw has thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-five registered voters in the city. The clerk's office issued ten thousand six hundred and three absentee ballots, which is twenty-eight percent of the registered voters. Seventy-one percent of those ballots have been returned so far, which I believe is about seventy-five hundred absentee ballots returned. For comparison, the two thousand sixteen presidential election, there were four thousand fifty-eight absentee ballots returned. Of course, there is also a change this year. This is the first presidential election where we have no reason absentee voting. So, that was probably going to have an impact anyway. But it will be interesting to see the final numbers when the clerk tallies up all of our voters and our voter participation and to see the impact that that's had on voting in the city. And I wanted to also mention, since we haven't, we haven't talked about development, there has been development going on, even though we're in the pandemic setting. But some of these projects were set up before that. And one I wanted to draw attention to, I'm sure you've all seen, two eighteen to two twenty-six South Washington, the development downtown. I think if you go and take a look at that building, it does fit in to the downtown. And that's a result of the form-based zoning that we all worked on and put in place in the city. I think that's a, was a great move for downtown and Old Town and the Riverfront District because you can see the impact that that's having when we have a new building that follows the form-based zoning. That area where that is, does require at least three stories. And it has requirements for amount of windows and various entrances and alleyways. So, it does have a significant impact on the downtown. And I think we see that in the design of that building. And finally, the city of Saginaw Police and Fire Departments received a generous gift from Mr. Gerald Rutledge, who passed away in April. Mr. Rutledge left approximately nine hundred thousand dollars to the Saginaw Police Department and nine hundred thousand dollars to the Fire Department. The city has just recently received the funds from the estate. We recognize and appreciate this extraordinary gift from Mr. Rutledge. We all know that the city has not had sufficient funds for necessary capital and equipment needs in those departments for several years. The police chief and the fire chief are both working on projects that could utilize a portion of that generous donation. So, again, we thank Mr. Rutledge for that contribution to the city. And that concludes the management update.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the city manager? Any questions? Yes, Councilman Millen.
There was a recent news article talking about the Rutledge Big Quest. As the funds have been received now and finalized, will we be having any sort of press release on this? Or was the news media coming back for the final story on it?
Well, I guess that's up to them. I don't know that we'll do a press release. We've been communicating with the estate the entire time. Most people are aware of the funds. At the time that the news stories did come out, I didn't comment to the press because I wanted the estate to be settled prior to that. And I advised them that you'd contact me after the estate was settled. So, everyone, they're free to contact us at this time. But I'll say that they're probably gonna ask what projects. And at this time, we don't have specific projects dedicated for those funds. So, we're creating funds in the city where those, the balance of those donations will be placed. And then the departments will work towards what they would like to spend it on. I think both chiefs and I are pretty confident that that should be spent on equipment or capital projects rather than also, we won't be touching those funds to offset any overtime or personnel costs. It'll all be for equipment or building improvements and that type of expenditure.
Thank you. I have one, and it isn't directly related to your report, but it does relate to the live meeting, the hybrid-type meeting we have. And that is a question that may be more appropriate for Madam Attorney, but is there an issue regarding making sure we have a quorum live when we meet?
I don't believe that there's anything in the amendments to the OMA that requires that the quorum be present. But in order for there to not be a quorum present, every member that's absent has to fall into, well, really, there's only three exceptions. One is military duty. And I'm not aware of any current council members being currently eligible to be snagged for that. The other is a medical condition that that member has that would prevent them from attending. And finally, the third is there being a state or local state of emergency or state of disaster, neither of which currently exists. So, it really kinda comes down to that medical condition exception. So, that would be the only reason that members could be accommodated to attend remotely after January first.
Okay. And that, as of the current moment, those are not in effect or they are in effect? Those, the current rules you just left, you mentioned?
Currently, virtual meetings can be conducted for any reason through the end of the year. After January first, members can only attend remotely for one of the three stated reasons.
Very good. Thank you. And that clarifies that. All right. Are there any other questions for the manager? Anybody have any other questions? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, we are ready to proceed.
We are now at the consent agenda.
It has, the agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV channel one ninety-one. Are there any exceptions to be noted by the clerk? Any council member have an exception to be noted by the clerk? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. Is there any opposed? Hearing none, the matter is carried. Madam Clerk?
We are now at boards, commission, and committee reports.
We, are there any reports from members of the city boards and commissions? Any reports? Anybody? Well, we had a Star, I can report. We have a Star's meeting, board meeting today. And Star's is, should be expected. Their fares revenue are down substantially because they've not been charging. But the rise of wellness is progressing very, very well. There is a large demand, and we are meeting it. And Star's otherwise is progressing quite well. Anybody else? Hearing none? Then we are next to the next item.
We are at appointment of board and commission members.
The, there is a reappointment of Sydney, well, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Madam Clerk. I shouldn't have taken your thunder.
No, Mayor, it is your reappointment, so you can go ahead and announce.
Then I have, yes. I would ask for an announcement of my reappointment of Sydney Childs to the Saginaw Housing Commission with a term to expire September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Would there be a motion to acknowledge that?
We don't need a motion.
Don't be the motion? All right, well, then.
You don't need any action.
Then I'm just, you get to hear it.
Right.
All right. I guess I've been out of this, out of, we've all been out of action here live for a long time. So, it's good to be back, but it also needs to be reminded of how we do it. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Next item.
We are at resolutions. We do have one this evening. It's declaring official intent to reimburse project expenditures with bond proceeds and authorizing publication of the notice of intent to issue bonds for water supply system improvements.
This is the matter the mayor, the manager previously discussed. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any discussion, Councilmember Millen?
Yes, I would just like to ask in a very general sense for the manager. As you mentioned that some of these proceeds are for refunding previously sold bonds, is the twenty-two and a half million total, the total of new authorization or a total of refunded bonds and new projects that are being rolled in at a favorable rate?
I believe the total of new projects is about twenty million dollars. But we would have those numbers when we do the issuance. We'll bring back the actuals. But what we had talked about for new projects is twenty. So, we are, we are a little bit farther behind because our revenues for water, the water fund are down, just like the fares are and some of the airport funding. But it's money that is in accounts receivable now because obviously, the commodity is being used. We just haven't been collecting some of it because of the executive orders that were out. So, that's delayed some of our projects this year. So, some of that funding will be to move forward with those projects so that we don't get too far behind on managing the system as well. So, all of, when we do the issuance, there will be a general description of the projects and of the refinancing.
Okay. Okay, any further questions for the manager? Any further questions? Or any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All right. Any opposed? It is carried. Madam Clerk?
We are now at miscellaneous business.
Is there any other business to be conducted by council? Yes, Mayor Pro Tem, more.
We'd like to, on behalf of, this is for Mayor Clark. I know he thought we forgot about him, but we didn't. It is tradition that we do this for all outgoing mayors. And because he is retiring, on behalf of all of your fellow colleagues, myself, Jamie Forbes, John Millen, Annie Bitch, Michael Balls, Bill Ostas, Reggie Williams, and Autumn Scherzer, I'd like to present you with your present.
It's probably a mask.
I started to get one, too. Personalize yourself.
Thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
Yeah, Halloween mask.
He has to show it? He has to show it if he don't break it?
Yeah, if I don't break it. Tell me what's happening. Well, first of all, I gotta open the card. That's the traditional thing, open the card.
It is a traditional thing.
All right. They don't make them like you anymore. That's, my mother would say the same thing. All right. It's signed by all the council members. And it says, actually, they never did. You're truly one of a kind. Congratulations on your retirement. Mayor Clark, thank you for your dedication and commitment to the city of Saginaw. We wish you continued success in all your future endeavors. Thank you, each one of you. Thank you very much. It has been, it has been an honor to serve with both past and present members of the city council. I really appreciate the dedication each of you have brought. city council. I really appreciate the dedication each of you have brought to council. I appreciate the hard work, the collegiality that each of you have brought, the willingness to pay attention to the issues of the day, the willingness to listen to the citizens, and the willingness to participate in all the events and activities that make our efforts so trying, but also so worthwhile. So, thank you, all of you. Before I get emotional, I better open up.
Late for that.
I just knew he was gonna get emotional. Now, he ain't used to open up no gifts. Now, he ain't opened up the gifts for him.
Wow. All right. It says, in grateful appreciation for your dedication and service, the Honorable Floyd Clark, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, November 26, 2018, November 8, 2020. Thank you, all of you. With that, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
I'll support that.
All right. We have, it's been moved inside to adjourn our first live meeting of the Saginaw City Council Meeting in eight months.
Eight months.
Wow.
I hate to see it go because it is good to be back in person, but at the same time, I don't have to worry about it after. So I bequeath to each of you the opportunity to carry on in the tradition that you have, you have been able to show the citizens that you are dedicated to them. Thank you. We are adjourned.